Welcome to tonight's forum for the mayor and city council candidates sponsored by the League of Women Voters, St. Peter area. My name is Linda Heiney. I'm a member of the New Ulm League of Women Voters, and I'm going to be your moderator this evening. One of our candidates tonight is a member of the League of Women Voters, St. Peter, which has asked me to moderate to avoid any appearance of bias. The forum is being recorded in its entirety without an audience present. We are at the North Mankato Police Annex, and it is October 6th. Editing will be authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of the candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. The League of Women Voters is a local, state, and national nonpartisan volunteer group. We do not support candidates or political parties. Candidate forums follow an unbiased and impartial format which has been established and published by the League of Women Voters of Minnesota. The League encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government, and it influences public policy through education and advocacy. Tonight's event is designed to allow candidates the opportunity to express their views on issues which are important to the members of the public. Tonight I will be asking questions which have been submitted by the public to the League of Women Voters via email prior to this evening. We have question facilitators who have screened the questions. The League will screen all questions we receive and may rephrase, combine, or eliminate questions to avoid duplication. We do not ask questions which are of a personal nature and not relevant to the office, or questions which would be designed to make a statement rather than solicit information. Questions that are hostile, embarrassing, inappropriate, or of a personal nature will not be asked. As the moderator, it's my responsibility to make the final determination as to which questions we will ask. The candidates for mayor are seated on your left, my right, and they are Warren Anderson, Scott Carlson, Kenneth DeWitt, and Ben Kaus. Candidates for city council are seated on my left, your right. They are Craig Amundson, Diane Norland, Sandra Oakes, and Matt Peterson. As we get started, the candidates will each have the opportunity to make opening statements, and they will have one and one-half minutes to complete their statements. Then, on a rotating basis, we will ask each of the candidates to respond to all of the questions. They will each have one and a half minutes to answer the questions. At the end of the forum, they will each have an opportunity to give a one-minute closing statement. You may wonder how we know how long their questions or their answers are. We have timers in the audience. The timers have obviously a stopwatch, and they will hold up a yellow sign indicating to the candidate when they have 15 seconds left. They will then hold up a stop sign when the time is up. Candidates are allowed to complete the sentence that they have started at the time that the stop sign appears. We have asked the candidates to be very specific in their opening statements as to the reasons why they are running for office, and their unique qualities, skills, experience, and expertise they would bring to their job. We will now, we're ready to begin. We can start with opening statements, and we'll start with the mayor candidates with Warren Anderson.
Hi. Thanks for inviting me tonight. I wanted to let people know that I haven't been out in the community as much as I would have liked because both my wife and myself contacted COVID about a month ago, so we're finally getting back on our feet now. So, I will be out in the neighborhoods as much as I can be over the next four weeks. I have been a resident of North Mankato for over 40 years. I was in business in Mankato, North Mankato area, for over 40 years, starting up businesses, running stores in town here. And I had to start up from scratch on a lot of these businesses, and so I do know how to do budgeting. And I do like to let people know that I am a very fiscal conservative. I believe that the city or any government should have a way to pay for anything that they've got planned without putting additional costs on the residents of the community. We need to look at everything that the city is spending on and look at how we're going to pay for it before we go ahead with things. We just found out about the $9 million for the All Seasons Arena that has to be funded. So, we have to look at all those things. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to Scott Carlson.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum tonight. A little bit about myself, I've been in North Mankato my entire life, almost 51 years in October. And I've just been blessed to both live in Lower North Mankato, grow up in the Spring Lake Park area, and also in the upper, or Hilltop area in the Forest Heights neighborhood. I currently live about a quarter mile from where I ended up as a child in the Forest Heights neighborhood by happenstance. And I'm the son of Dale Carlson, him and my grandfather, and ultimately Skip Tillish got started and ran the Carlson-Tillish High Clinic in town. I believe I've been teaching in the district for 28 years, coaching for 31 years in the school district, and maybe a little bit longer if you include Mount Cato. I've got a tremendous amount of experience coordinating and working with a large coaching staff. I've had experience subbing for our administrators at Monroe Elementary with, when they're gone, with discipline and other things that need to be done while they're gone. I've got a big passion and a hobby of watching finance, and so I just enjoy looking at budgets and looking at the details and trying to, you know, look at ways to solve those possible problems or how to improve them.
Thank you. Kenneth DeWitt.
Good evening. My name's Kenneth Kenny DeWitt. I come to you tonight, I want to thank the League of Women Voters from St. Peter, and you, Linda, coming over from New Ulm to moderate for us. This isn't my first forum. I've been involved in previous. I was trying to get a seat with the Nicola County Commissioners earlier this year, so I participated in a forum that back in February. Been a resident of North Mankato for over 40 years, been a homeowner now for 34 years, been married for 36 to a North Mankato girl. I retired in 2016 from Crown Court Conceal after a 31-year career there. Was spending a little time in the rocking chair and talking politics over lunch with the guys three days a week. Needless to say, my wife is in and out of a job, and I went back into the working roles again, presently driving airport shuttle to and from Minneapolis-St. Paul on a five-day-a-week basis. And I tell you what, I meet a lot of people from North Mankato, and I'm getting a chance to do a little politicking going down the highway. But I did run for mayor in 2004 against Gary Zomer. Unbeknownst to me, it'll never happen to me, I was involved in a motorcycle car collision in Jensenland Township of Sibley County on the 25th of September of that year, and was hospitalized for 101 days. Did garner 38% of the mayoral vote while laying in a hospital bed in Minneapolis. And I want to give it another try. So, here I am. I was on the city council once, so I do have some city experience.
Thank you. Ben Kaus.
Hi, yeah. Ben Kaus, I am also born and raised in North Mankato. Some people might know my parents, Neil and Barb Kaus, are also born and raised in North Mankato, so long family ties as well to this wonderful, wonderful community that we're all a part of. My work experience has started with Taylor Corporation as well. I worked there for 10 years, and also I've been working in eight years locally too for Better Stone Company, and currently hold the role as their president. One of the things about myself, I have a family of four, raising Charlie and Claire. Charlie's in third grade. Mr. Carlson's his favorite teacher. And my daughter Claire is in kindergarten right now down at Monroe. Married to my wife Mary now for 14 years, so we're happy to be in North Mankato now and raising our own family. A little bit about me also, definitely feel I have leadership skills. I've been involved in team aspects of things kind of my entire life with activities, and that's kind of turned into kind of my career path as well too, working with others from a team focus to come to common goals and stuff from a workplace environment. Also, it's tied into things of good financial things, of budget experience, and stuff that I can bring to the table to hopefully be a good mayor for North Mankato.
All right, we'll move on to our council candidates, first with Craig Amundson.
I am a lifelong resident of North Mankato, married to my wife for 37 years. We just celebrated that last week. I am operations manager for 7Up in Mankato. Free Press had that wrong in the paper. I deal with budgets, I deal with people, and like to get the feel for what people want and what people need, and bring people together in order to get things done. I've lived in Lower North Mankato all my life. I'm actually a block and a half from where I grew up in Lower North. I lived on one side of Wheeler, and now I live on the other side of Wheeler. Went to school in Mankato and hope to make a difference.
Thank you. Diane Norland.
Thank you for this opportunity, and I appreciate the League of Women Voters going forward with this. Unlike several of you, no, I haven't lived here my entire life. However, we did, my husband and I lived here beginning in the 60s, going to school, as you can imagine. And we have, well, my husband is gone now, but we have lived here ever since. After a stint in the Peace Corps, we came back here, and I was an English and history teacher at West and East High School. I went to work also for Blue Earth County, developing their aging services, particularly their volunteer driver service. I also, a little later, sat on a committee that developed CADA, the Committee Against Domestic Abuse. And then I took a role on the Governor's Task Force to fund battered women's shelters all around the state of Minnesota. I also worked for the Initiative Foundation as Community Development Director to run money to organizations and communities who were working on development. As you can see, I take the greatest joy in working with others to build the assets that help members of the community.
Thank you. Sandra Oakes.
Hello. Just like everyone else, I'd like to thank the League for having us here tonight. Appreciate the invitation. I am originally from Pocahontas, Iowa, born and raised, and moved here in 1992 to go to school at what at the time was called Mankato State University. And during my tenure there, I fell in love with the community, and I also fell in love with my husband, and decided to make my lifelong residency here in North Mankato. So, my husband and I have been married, it's 25 years in September. We have two wonderful children, Amber and Chase, and I have four amazing grandchildren that live also in North Mankato. So, all of us live here and do business and work and everything here in North Mankato. Back in 2016, my husband and I purchased Spinner's Bar and Grill in the Central Business District, and we currently live in the North Ridge area, so I know how the Hilltop area runs, and I know how the downtown area runs, so I am very familiar with that. In addition, we also own, my husband and I also own another business and a rental property. So, we have a lot of experience with working with budgets, and especially with the business. The business was hit hard by the COVID, and we managed to make it through there, and we're hoping to continue to be sustainable. And I use those talents and skills to help with our current city work. So, thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least.
Hi. My name's Matt Peterson. I've ran for council a couple times in the past, unsuccessful. Like most of this table, I'm a transplant. I moved here in 93 to go to Mankato State. I grew up down by Marshall, Minnesota, in a small farming community. My wife moved here in 94. We got married in 98 and have been married for 24 years this year. In that time, we've raised three kids, we're currently raising three kids. Our daughter's 21, goes to college and plays soccer in college. Our son is a junior at West, and we have another son who is a sixth grader at Dakota Meadows. So, pastimes, and a little bit about me, we spend hours and hours in the car every weekend, going to, you name it, Michigan, Vegas, all over to watch sporting events and support our kids in chasing their dreams while they're young. We're to a point now in our careers where approaching the 50s, I have the free time and the time it takes now to take on a role like this that is so demanding. I've been blessed with a job that allows me to have that flexibility, and I look forward to, you know, the vote and hoping that I can become a candidate or a city council member.
Thank you. And I'm going to have you hold on to the mic because you're first in the first answer to respond to the first question. Then the next will be Sandra Oakes, Craig Amundson, and then Diane Norland. And here's the question. "Overseeing the budget is a major responsibility of the mayor and city council. How would you balance the city residents' needs for services with the tax burden on the residents?"
In my professional career, for the last 24 years, I've been budgeting and running businesses locally here in town. For a big chunk of the time, it was Schwickert's, and I was their general manager. And for the last year or so, I've been the vice president at Hein Brothers Roofing. So, budgeting is a daily aspect of running our business. I take pride in knowing what's going in, what's going out, and what we can actually perform with the monies we have. On a daily occurrence, we're reaching out and working with homeowners, fixed income, business owners with fixed incomes. And every project we do, we're sitting down around a table, talking about a budget and how we can bring it in to make it both beneficial for us, the contractor, and them, the person who needs the service. So, it's very important to me that as we plan and look at the infrastructure of the city and the wants versus the needs, that we're paying attention to the tax burden, and we're not overspending on wants, but we're taking care of the needs first.
Thank you. And before we move on, if anyone would like me to repeat a question, please let me know. So, go ahead, Sandra.
Could you repeat the question? I was active listening, and I forgot.
Sure, sure. "Overseeing the budget is a major responsibility of the mayor and city council. How would you balance the city residents' needs for services with the tax burden on the residents?"
Thank you. As being a council member for the last four years, it was interesting to learn how a public entity runs a business or runs their business, almost like a corporation does. So, it's, there's a little bit of difference, there's some differentiating factors, but overall, it's really important to understand not only what the community needs and what needs to be fixed, so talking about past and future, but it's also good to, it's important to plan ahead and for the unexpected. That was one thing that I've always done in my entire career, and especially during the COVID. Owning a restaurant during COVID was extremely difficult for the entire state. Not a lot of businesses and restaurants made it through that. And so, it was strategic planning and understanding where the money is and where it comes from is important. Now, I'm going to say that the council, for the long time, has done a great job in making sure that North Mankato's city tax rate continues to go down. That doesn't seem right when you look at when land prices go up. Those are some factors that will definitely inhibit some of the ways that we can bring in income, because we really want to make sure that our residents don't have to overburden themselves with the current taxes plus the commodity issues. So, it's a hard job. I think we can do it, and thank you.
Craig Amundson is next.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. "Overseeing the budget is a major responsibility of the mayor and city council. How would you balance the city residents' needs for services with the tax burden on the residents?"
You'd have to find that happy medium between what you want and what you need, and basically plan for the worst and hope for the best as far as, planning is in everything, and to look and see what and prioritize what you need to keep things running well and go down the line as the money comes available, and stay within your budget. I mean, it's just one of those that you have to take and make sure the money is there.
Thank you. Diane Norland.
Thank you. Just so you know, you see this packet here? It has probably, what, 100 pages? This is the materials, these are the materials that we have gotten from the finance people and from Kevin McCann about the upcoming budget. So, we study deeply and gather information and research as we plan the budget. It takes us some months to come to a conclusion and come to an actual budget. I'm very proud of the fact that our tax rate has gone down. We've been able to get it to go down in the last years, so that is, you know, that's a very good thing. We have also developed a capital improvement plan, which is, I think, very smart, and they weren't doing that some years ago. So, we can look out and say, for example, President's Row, that was a rehab process of those streets that took place over years. And I remember one staff member saying, "Some of that infrastructure was 60 years old." So, we also have to deal with that as well, and keep up, and keep up.
Thank you. All right, we will turn to the mayor candidates, and Ben Kaus will answer first, then Kenny DeWitt, Warren Anderson, then Scott Carlson.
Obviously, being the president of Better Stone, budgeting as you're running a company in a small family business is very vital and very important, that you have, like Diane said, a lot of cross-collaboration as you're forming those budgets. And you also understand when forming those budgets, you understand which items could have the biggest impact if they fluctuate from what is thought to be that way, and so you can understand the impact of what that'll have, and then still have some collaboration on contingency plans if things don't quite go to plan, because they usually don't, and we need to know what those things are too, so we can reconcile and stay as close to the budget as we can, and make sure that we're reviewing that budget in a weekly or monthly manner in good detail. Part of it too, to help prioritize the needs, I think, comes with good collaboration within the council too, so that we are prioritizing the needs of the citizens to making sure those dollars are getting spent as wisely as possible. Also, to help with that tax burden too, we need to still develop and still have a plan of what we're doing with the growth of our businesses and the growth of getting more residential citizens as well too. So, not only can we just grow there, that way we're not so reliant on having to look at a tax increase base for our current residents and keep that as low as possible for them in the future.
Thank you. Let me see, what did I say? Kenny DeWitt is next.
Being a former member of the North Mankato City Council, I went through four years of our financial budgeting process, and I know what it all consists of. I have to admit, Wendell Sandy, as a city administrator, was a good financial man for the city of North Mankato. He instilled a lot of new industrial business on top of our Hilltop, bringing in more tax base for us to help us keep everything within reason. I want to maintain the services that we do have presently. I am big in encouraging and supporting our law enforcement environment here in North Mankato as we continue to grow at a small rate. But when I was on the council, I believe we had 12,000 citizens. Now, we're in 14,000-plus, and we are a small, major city here in southern Minnesota, so we've got that. I have to give the council my approval for hiring Kevin McCann, our former finance guy, now as our city administrator, because he knows numbers, and he can help us into the future as we go forward. I appreciate your help.
Next would be Warren Anderson.
When I worked for Happy Dan's back in the late 70s, our owner, we would come to him with proposals, and he says, "You can do anything you want, as long as it doesn't cost me any money." And that's the situation we have to look at. We can't spend money that we don't know exactly where the money's coming from. And city services in North Mankato are great. We have, everything works really well, but we have to look ahead at what our needs are versus things that we want. We have to do upkeep on the services we have, so we don't fall behind. But again, we have to look at it. The property tax, when they talk about the, our values of our houses keep continuing to go up, well, unless you're going to sell your house and not buy another, it doesn't help you any. And our property tax continue to go up every year. We just need to really look at where we're spending the money, where it's really needed, and go from there. I know I've done budgeting, and you have to really get down into the nitty-gritty and figure out exactly where your money's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Carlson.
I echo a lot of what my fellow candidates have said. I'm very sensitive to budgets and fiscally responsible. I had our house paid off, I bet, 10 years ago, at a pretty young age for a young family with a wife with MS and not a lot of great income coming in, but I believe that you need to pay off, you know, things that you need and save for those emergencies, like some of those, some others have said. I do support, I think we need to be visionaries, and we need to support that and the slow growth, I like the slow, stable growth of North Mankato that helps support that tax base, so we can keep those taxes low. We can't become stagnant, that doesn't help us either with maintaining what we currently have for services. So, I do support that slow growth. I've heard from many citizens, they love our small-town feel. They love the community, but they don't want to see it blow up real quick, and I agree with that. I love the feel we have right now. I do support too, budgetary-wise, law enforcement, fire. I think that's very important, and I love the infrastructure improvements we're doing in Lower North Mankato right now. We need to stay on top of that, and again, find those creative ways to budget, continue to budget for those items.
Thank you. For our second question, can't believe we've been at it this long, we're up to number two. We will start with the mayoral candidates, and Scott will answer first, followed by Warren, then Ben, then Kenny. The question is, "The Minnesota Green Step Cities Program was developed to create sustainable cities program that would challenge, assist, and recognize cities that were green stars. Would you support North Mankato joining this Minnesota Green Step Cities Program? Why or why not?" Scott, go ahead.
That is a tricky question. I'm sort of, I guess, I hate to say it, but I'm sort of in the middle. I need to know more about it. I like sustainable and green future, a lot of it, but if we're going to be honest, a lot of our green ideas are also ideas that are things that are going to be, need to be replaced quicker. It takes a lot of resources to build the solar panels. I've seen already replacements after not that many years of turbines and wind farms. I love the idea. I love a good mix of green energy and fossil fuel energy. I'm not necessarily on either side of that. So, I'd have to research more whether we would become a partner, but, you know, I think it's going to take honestly, from now and in the future, I think it's going to take a balance. We noticed just recently, you know, with the hurricanes and the loss of power in Florida, it doesn't take long to cut that power off, and you can't fuel up or... it doesn't take long to cut that power off, and you can't fuel up or power up your Tesla or your electric vehicles. So, I think a balance is good, and I think it's great for our earth in the future.
Thank you. Warren Anderson.
When I come up with a question like that, I always want to look at, what's it going to cost us? And if the costs are reasonable, if it's something that we can take care of without raising taxes, I, I think it's a good idea. The thing is, again, like Scott just said, we need to have a mixture right now. We cannot go all green. You see that around the state, the wind farms, the solar panels and stuff, but again, they're not 100%. You need to have something else that you can use. But again, if the city can look at it and the costs are in line, I don't have a problem with it. So, thank you.
Ben is next.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. "The Minnesota Green Step Cities Program was developed to create a sustainable cities program that would challenge, assist, and recognize cities that were green stars. Would you support North Mankato joining the Minnesota Green Step Cities Program? And why or why not?"
Thank you. Also, I'm not quite as familiar with that, of the specifics, too, but in general, for the program as well, like Warren said, you do have to consider the costs. The costs that would put on the citizens to, to build and have that infrastructure, what would be needed to get in more environmentally friendly as well, too, is something that has to be considered, and what can the city support? If we have to put in more stations for electric vehicles and have that so people can charge those even in their garage and stuff, can the city support that? What kind of money goes into having to get that into a neighborhood? We need to look at. So, right away now, I would say, no, I won't support it at this moment in time, continually opening up and gradually working to that in a progressive, progressive way that we can get to without incurring too much cost as we go.
Kenny DeWitt.
Yes, I'm not too aware of the Green Step Program or the Green Star Cities Program at this time. I, I know we're pushing and shoving for, by the year 2050, we're going to all be driving electric cars, but we have to charge these cars. Where are all these charging stations going to be? In our driveways? I know up on Commerce Drive in upper North Mankato, the city has established some charging stations there, and I give them a lot of credit. And on occasion, I do see cars plugged in there, and I give the city credit for implementing that amongst that. There's also the talk of carbon fiber, or carbon capture and running pipelines throughout all of the state to capture this carbon that's being generated in the ethanol plants. And that was brought up at the, on the county commissioners forum and was talked about. And, but, I just got done traveling the coast of California for nine days, and I tell you, boy, they aren't, they aren't going to, there are a lot of solar panels and a lot of wind farms out there, but there's a lot of automobiles going up and down the freeway, so fossil fuels are here to stay for a while.
We will now turn to the council candidates. Again, "The Minnesota Green Step Cities Program was developed to create sustainable cities program that would challenge, assist, and recognize cities that were green stars. Would you support North Mankato joining the Minnesota Green Step Cities Program? Why or why not?" Diane Norland will respond first, followed by Craig Amundson, then Matt Peterson and Sandra Oaks.
Okay. Thank you. The, the Minnesota Green Step Program came to our attention some years ago, and while we're, while we were interested in it, there were some, some things that weren't going to work very well for us, and so we just kind of, as a philosophy, have become more environmentally friendly. So, we just studied through the, the council ordinances and had the engineers, our advisory committee engineers, help us to rewrite storm runoff, because it's, it's pollution, or it can be certainly pollution. So, we have, we took on the heavy duty of reworking it so that it would be more effective in dealing with storm runoff. I think we should look into the Minnesota Green Steps Program again and see how they have developed and see what we can learn from them. We know, for example, that our water is very polluted, not our drinking water, you know, not our water here in town, but the Minnesota River. And we are, with the runoff from our lawns, we're contributing to that.
Thank you. Craig Amundson.
I don't know much about the Green Star Initiative. I know that anything that has to be green-related is, can be expensive, it can be a little bit hard to start and a little bit to maintain it. I think we can all work that way. As I say, with the, like Dan was talking about with the stormwater, I think the city has done a very good job about maintaining it and then releasing it slowly to let things settle out in it. The charging stations, like the mayoral council candidates mentioned, can be set up in different areas and take and, for people to use. I think it's one of those that you have to work in order to get, and it's going to be kind of an uphill battle. Thank you.
Next is Matt Peterson.
So, I'm not really familiar with the, the Green Step or the Green Stars City, but I'm going to compare it to LEED certification in the construction industry. And every time we throw that in the construction industry, the cost of your project goes up. It, it just does, whether it's lighting retrofit, whether it's rooftop gardens, you, you name it through the industry, it all comes with a price tag on the front side. So, to me, to answer that question now would be a no. I don't know enough about it. I don't know what the, what all the initiatives or the programs along with it would be, but I do know it's a slippery slope when we start talking about it, because there's a lot of people that want the feel-good factor of, "I am green," or "I'm supporting this." And if we base it off the feel-good factor with, without putting all the thought that's needed in it from a budgetary standpoint, it, it could get a little out of hand. Now, as a city, as a current city council, and, and the employees and, and the city as general, I, I think they do a great job thinking about the environment, thinking about our city, and I, and my personal opinion is if we all do our part, whatever big or small that is, that's, that's going to move the needle. So, right now, the answer would be no, because I purely think it would be not cost prohibitive.
Thank you. Sandra Oaks.
Thank you. Just like some people have said, I don't want to say no, and I can't say yes, because there is a lot of factors that go into it. I believe in sustainability, I believe in green, I believe in keeping our environment healthy for our future generations. I'm a grandmother, and I have a three-month-old grandson, so, I mean, I want this community to be well-maintained, so he can raise his family here as well. But I think along with not only becoming a green city, there comes along some restrictions, too, and those restrictions could be not only cost prohibitive to the city, but it could also be cost prohibitive to the residents. So, I think, in my opinion, there's a lot that we can do to move towards that goal, and that's saying that that goal can't be put on the calendar, but I think right now it's just up to us to do what we can as individuals. At my establishment, I capture all the rainwater and I use it for plants and watering things in the yard. So, it is important, but also, I think that there's a lot of work that can be done, so that is my opinion.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with the council candidates. Sandra Oaks will go first, then Matt Peterson, Diane Norland, and Craig Amundson. We've got a couple of questions about the athletic facilities. This, this one relates to Caswell Field House. "Will you support continued efforts to apply for state bonding dollars to build the Caswell Field House and indoor tennis center? Why or why not?"
That is a great question. I have been on board with the Caswell expansion project since day one. I am in the hospitality industry. Most of my working career has been in the hospitality industry. I think it's a great idea. I think we need facilities for our different sports programs, not only for our community, but for visitors. However, with that being said, at that time, we didn't anticipate the COVID situation. There's a lot of things that have come up regarding the prices of the fieldhouse that concern me now moving forward. I try to budget conservatively, and as much as that price has gone up, I don't know where that money's going to come from yet. That's not saying that I want to take it completely off the table, but there's going to be, in my opinion, some work that needs to be done to cover those additional costs. And as I said, I think it's important to have that fieldhouse, but I'm concerned about the huge increase in cost, so, thank you.
Matt Peterson.
Yes, I would support it, going for the funding. My personal opinion on where we are with it currently is, I feel as a citizen, we were kind of, what's the political, politically correct way to say it, shoved into building this as fast as we can, because we thought we had the support and everything was going to be there. So, I feel that there's probably a better use of the facility and the land where it is. I kind of wish there would have been more, more of a, a thought process of going in of, of, is that the right place? Just because we have an acre or two of land there, is that the right place for the next 30 years to have that fieldhouse? Or is there something that should be on a larger plot of land, a little bit away from Caswell, with some more private donations and a city collaboration where it can grow? I mean, it's landlocked there, so as much as I'd like to see my 11-year-old have some facilities close up here in North Mankato that we could utilize as a community, I also don't know if, where it's going to be built and the current plan for building it is what we really need. I feel like we're kind of settled for a building, because we were trying to get it through.
Craig Amundson.
Can you repeat the question?
"Will you support continued efforts to apply for state bonding dollars to build Caswell Field House and indoor tennis center? Why or why not?"
I think we, North Mankato needs to have something like that on this side of the river. I think maybe a partnership with the YMCA. They've been looking at expanding out in a different area to bring in another building. As I say, what Matt had brought up, that it is landlocked, I think a better place for it may be, so that there isn't so much traffic close to the school, but then the school district can also use it, being that close. I think if we do do it, it does bring in a lot of people to Caswell, and it could be kind of a state-of-the-art, like they've brought in with the diamonds that we have up there with the state tournaments that come in, brings a lot of money into this town, and with hotels and the bars and that type of stuff for food, North Mankato is kind of becoming a destination site, and that could be something that would bring more people into the town.
Diane Norland.
Yes, to everything everybody has said, the, this Caswell process has been in the works for many, many, many years, and it's, it, it, the building did get slowed down a little bit because of COVID and the increasing costs, but also because the state legislature did not pass the, the bonding bill, the funding bill, because we had, oh, now, don't quote me, but I'm thinking it's $8 million. Sandra, do you think so? No, I'm not sure. Anyway, if you want to know for sure, call up Kevin, he'll know. So, some good dollars to help us develop that. Caswell is an asset. The, the building, which will offer other services, indoor services, will be another asset. I remember the story, I think it was last summer, when Phil Tostensen said that there was some contests going on in Caswell, some tournaments, and he said that every hotel in town, that means Mankato and North Mankato, was full for the weekend, so it's an economic asset.
Thank you. Now, we will ask the mayoral candidates the same question. Would you continue to, would you support continued efforts to apply for state bonding dollars to build Caswell Field House and the indoor tennis center? Why or why not? First is Kenny DeWitt, then Ben Kaus, Scott Carlson, and Warren Anderson, and I will try to actually follow that this time.
Continuing on with the fieldhouse, this subject matter goes back to when I was on the city council in 2010 already, and upon Wendell Sandy's retirement and Mr. Herenstein coming onboard as city administrator, I addressed the issue. I says, "Let's go for a ride some Saturday up to the metro. I can show you a half dozen of these fieldhouses in all sorts of different communities, from Adina to Bloomington to Ridgefield, right on down the line." And he says, "Well, that sounds like a fun little afternoon." And I said, "It could be, but it never happened." I'm all in favor of it. I think it would be the greatest asset for us in this community. I look across the river, Mankato doesn't have one, but the University of Minnesota Mankato has one. I was just through Northfield a weekend ago on my way to the river to watch the, look at leaves, and there's a new one built there in Northfield. And I'm going, boy, you know, they're popping up everywhere, and, you know, Northfield's no bigger than North Mankato, if not smaller. And it's, you know, yes, we are going to need state bonding to get this accomplished. Yes, we do have a small piece of property for a, a facility like that up there by Caswell Park. There are some old properties that the city owns, or that the Port Authority owns, that we could look into up on the hilltop area, and I think it would be a true asset for this community.
Ben Kaus.
Yeah, yes. I also support going after the bonding to bring this Caswell Field House into play. I think it, again, would be another long-term asset for the city of North Mankato and the surrounding community to continue to bring in that tax revenue and base, so we can gradually still continue some, some healthy growth, and having that, too, also help long-term keep our tax base down. So, with that, too, one thing it also does is it helps promote physical fitness within the, within the community. It gives our kids another outlet in the winter months to do something active, to help with their mental health and not being inside in, in the longer winters that we have, as well as gives another opportunities for kids to get more coaching, more adult supervision there, structure, what it is to work for things. This type of facility will, will provide that opportunity for kids and adults, for us in the surrounding community. So, yes, I support it.
Okay. Scott Carlson.
These are such a great question. I've obviously been involved in youth sports for a long time, 31 years, not including a few more extra years at Mankato, and I am a physical education teacher at Monroe Elementary here in North Mankato. I've got daughters that have benefited tremendously from Caswell Complex and fast pitch softball. I've got daughters that have been, my youngest was in soccer for a while, too. My only concern, I, I'm in support of growth, my only concern is indoor facilities take more money to run, air conditioning, heating, cooling, electric. It has to be maximized and used quite a bit, and how do we know also that Mankato doesn't pop another one up or something, and we, it becomes a competitive disadvantage to us? Which brings up my final point, is I think that I wish, and I might- Which brings up my final point, is I think that I wish, and I, one of my goals would be to strategize and plan with Mankato better, kind of bridge those gaps again, so that we can maximize our strengths from across the river, both sides, and not be competitive against each other, but can be competitive in southern Minnesota with each other and draw people in together. That way, we're not wasting money, taxpayers' money, by doing these facilities, but we're maximizing it and getting the most out of it. Case in point, in a normal amount of time, is we just, Mankato's adding four, four more fields and a turf complex up at East High School. That's going to put us at a disadvantage competitively if it's a smaller tournament. They may choose to go over there on that side.
Warren Anderson.
Well, I like the idea, but I live in Green Acres neighborhood, and I would really need to see a traffic plan, because when Caswell's busy, you can't move out of our neighborhood, because both Lookout Drive and Lorry Drive are jammed up. If this was going to add to that, I don't see how physically we, they can work it out for traffic-wise. But if the money was available, if they can get donations, and the city's not on the hook for a ton of money, I think it would be. I think maybe by the soccer complex would maybe be a better area, because there's easier ways to get in and out of that than by Caswell. But, you know, that would have to be something that could be set up to figure out how they're going to handle additional traffic. Because again, our area is also growing. There's a new development north of the reserve that's going to be adding people in, that are going to be having to take Lookout Drive or Lorry. And if you add those into the neighborhoods that are already there, that's going to, again, make the traffic that much worse. If you add another complex in by Caswell, can we, can the roads actually handle the traffic patterns? So I'm in favor if they can work all that out. Thank you.
All right. We will continue with two more questions, two-part questions. This one is also regarding a sporting complex, and we're going to talk about All Seasons Arena. We'll start with the mayoral candidates, with Warren Anderson first, then Scott Carlson, Ben Kous, and Kenny DeWitt. All Seasons Arena is a regional asset for indoor hockey and figure skating. The original memorandum of understanding signed to build the arena was in 1979 and included Mankato, North Mankato, Nicolet County, Blue Earth County, and Skyline. Nicolet County has since dropped out. Long-term debt was paid off after making some mandated improvements. Now new long-term debt is needed. Here are the questions. First, are you willing to support additional long-term funding for All Seasons Arena? The second question will be how you view North Mankato's role in the arena's future, but we will take the first question, and you'll get a minute and a half on that. We'll address that first. And go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Okay. The, the Mankato, North Mankato area does need hockey for everyone. So I don't see there's an option except for All Seasons Arena. The problem is, we've got $9 million to pay, and I don't know how the funding is going to come out. I don't know the percentage that North Mankato pays. I know Eagle Lake had dropped out, and so they're, they're, we're losing people, areas, towns, whatever, to, to help pay for it. I would really have to see how, where the money's coming from, because I know it gets used a lot. I ran a campus store, and we saw people there all the time. We went to the figure skating. We've done, we've been there a lot, and I know it needs to be updated. I know $9 million is just, it's just more than, than I can fathom, that it's going to cost $9 million. And I know costs have gone up, but still, that's a lot of money to spend, but I don't know how we're going to get around it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Scott Carlson.
I, not surprisingly, I'm also a former hockey player. So I kind of grew up a little bit in the younger leagues before I switched to skiing with Kenny DeWitt here. I am in support of the growth of hockey. We do need it. We've got young kids practicing late, late at night, and that's the only time to get the, get the facility. I am in agreement that funding's huge, and we need to be creative with that. One of the things that I've been researching with that, I'm not sure if, I'd like to research a little more, but, you know, we could do more with using that facility for other events, and not necessarily downtown. Mankato, the Civic Center all the time. It's my understanding possibly insurance is holding us back on that. So maybe another entity needs to manage the facility so that we have the type of insurance that would allow us to maybe have, you know, a book show or some smaller event there to start generating more revenues. Maybe add things like, I've been to Crooked Pint up in Chaneston at the Curling Club, maybe a Bar Grill or something where we can start leasing space to come to other bars and restaurants that would hopefully help bring in some more revenues also. So I'm all for it, but I do think we need to be creative with our, how we're going to do it, and I think we might need to rejoin that partnership for that.
All right. Ben Kous. The question is, are you willing to support additional long-term funding for All Seasons Arena?
To some of the points here that they made too. It is definitely a need in our community. The youth hockey program has got a great turnout, and it's very vibrant in our community. So starting to look at creative ways of what it is to upkeep that facility, I think is very important, and we need to explore those. Hopefully there's ways that we can collaborate with the local hockey program, as well as the city of Mankato, on how that can done. At the same time, we have to also be aware too that that's not only the thing that the youth hockey players need. They actually still need another sheet of ice as well too. So like Scott alluded to, the practice times for some of these kids and these families, as early in the morning or as late at night, is, is very taxing on the families that are involved in the hockey program. And we don't want that to deter any of our young kids from going out for a sport that they, that they like to compete in. So I think as a community, we all need to kind of continue to discuss this issue and finally start making some steps towards improving All Seasons Arena, finding a collaborative way altogether as a community to get kids what they need to be active as well too. But obviously, understanding the budgets on top of that thing, and seeing what we can do from that extent.
Thank you. Kenny DeWitt.
As a former member of the North Mankato City Council, I was appointed to the All Seasons Board of Directors, and I served on that board for four years. And I knew what it took to make the All Seasons Arena tick. And back 12 years ago already, they were looking to add that third sheet of ice up there. And I think had the funding presented itself, or the state bonding, they would have went ahead and put that third sheet of ice, but they were short square footage in the parking lot to do that. So it, it never happened. At the time, when I was on the board, Mankato State was their biggest customer up there, men's hockey. Well, since then, the men's hockey has moved downtown Mankato, and they have a cash cow there at this male health arena. That building's under construction again to repair whatever damages were to the facade or the roof or whatever down there. But here a few years ago, they were putting in a new, new humidification program and a new refrigeration in the floor, and had to tear up all the concrete. But we need to maintain that building there, and I'm in favor of, you know, I don't want to see North Mankato go broke, but we do need to keep up our aspect of it. Another aspect of that was, the college did a study, there were more North Mankato youth using that facility than Mankato youth when I was on the Board of Directors, and that was an asset to us.
All right. And now to the city council candidates for the same questions. First will be Craig Amundson, then Diane Norland, Matt Peterson, and Sandra Oakes. And the question was, are you willing to support additional long-term funding for All Seasons Arena?
I think we need to keep All Seasons Arena at a state-of-the-art type facility. I think it helps, and as you say, with some of the people that have the younger kids, to, a place for it, them to practice and have games. We need to look at any source of funding that we can use, and be creative in how we spend the money, and try and support keeping it up, because if it starts to deteriorate more, it's going to be costing more in the long run. It has to look for different sources of funding, and we just have to be creative. I guess that's the best thing. Thanks.
Diane Norland.
Yes, I agree with all of it. Yes. All Seasons is definitely an asset to the larger, to the larger community. It is also old, so we really have to look at getting serious about updating it for a lot of reasons, including health, including the health of the people who play there. There, and, and yes, it's going to cost some money, so there are things we have to look at. Can we get some state bonding dollars? Could we, I don't know if you know this, but I'm Development Director for the House of Hope. I write grants. I raise money. So is there a foundation out there? The Twins have a foundation. Is there a foundation out there that could be, that could be asked, and, you know, would give us some help in re, in renovating it?
Thank you. Matt Peterson.
Yes, I'm willing to support the long-term debt to, to keep that facility up and running and to make it more state-of-the-art. You look around at the Anthony Ford Pond Hockey Tournament, look around at Hockey Day Mankato, Hockey Day 2022 in Mankato. I don't know if there's going to be another town that can beat, but we just pulled, this community pulled off. It was up at the college, but there was a lot of, you know, I mean, it was a, it was a regional event, and hockey needs to be supported. These kids are practicing early, they're practicing late, they're, it's, it's just not good on that. So, I mean, we have to be creative. We have to figure out a way to make it all work, whether that's with grants or bonding or, or partners that can come into it. But yeah, I support it.
Go ahead, Sandra Oakes.
Thank you. It's kind of ironic that I'm last. As Mr. DeWitt mentioned, he was on the ASA Board of Directors, and I am the current city liaison on that board. So this is really near and dear to my heart, and one of the reasons, one of the reasons that I'm running again for reelection is because this facility has been neglected for so long, but it's got so many users. And if we lose the brink, I, we, we lose a lot of extra time that our kids get to skate with each kid, gets to learn respect and teamwork. And there's just so many good things that come out of that facility that I think it's absolutely important that we continue this. I could talk for, you know, a long time, and I know I only probably only got like 30 seconds left, but it's a consortium. It's a, it's a group of public entities that agree that this needs to happen. The consortium agreement technically went away many years ago, so we've been running just on the good faith of everyone. And I think it's important that we tell all of our candidates that are running for election this year how important it is. Like Nicolet County should be back on board. You know, Madison Lake, it's all supported through the, it's actually run through the District 77, but the city of Mankato manages it while the rest of us on the board make those decisions. So this could be a catastrophic, catastrophic event where the kids might not have ice, so it's important that we continue to support it.
Okay. So this was a two-part question, as I said. In my judgment, most of you addressed the second part, but if, I guess since I offered it, I would say if anybody would like 30 seconds to respond to what I said earlier was the second part, I would offer that opportunity. And the second part was, how do you view North Mankato's role in the arena's future? If anybody doesn't feel like they had the opportunity already to address that, kind of give me a sign, and we'll go ahead with it, otherwise I'll move on. I also feel like I should confess that I'm a recovering hockey mom and figure skating mom. I just, after all that, I had to get it off my chest.
I have to tell them that you have a beautiful facility in New York.
We do. We also spent a lot of time at the beautiful facility in Mankato. Yes. Thank you. All right. So this is, speaking of 30 seconds, this, I'm going to give you a 30-second lightning round question. I'm thinking I even warned you that that could happen. You got 30 seconds to respond to this question, and let's see, we start with the mayor's candidates on this one. It'll be, right? Nope, I start with the city council. I looked this way and said the wrong word. All right. Sandra Oakes, then Matt Peterson, Craig Amundson, and Diane Norland. North Mankato's promotional campaign exclaims, "It's in our DNA," meaning we live in a darn nice area. 30 seconds, tell us what you see as darn nice in the, in the area.
Number one, our, our citizens. I feel safe and comfortable with my neighbors lower and on Hilltop, our public safety. I think this is just, it's a nice, small-bedroom community that's got a lot to offer a lot of people. So that is my answer. Okay.
We're going to go on, but I knew I'd do it.
To follow off that, our police, our fire department, our, our services that we have here are top-notch and amazing. We've got great parks. We've got that small-town feel. I feel safe letting my, my son ride all over North Mankato on his bike. So I just like the small-town feel, even though we're growing and growing every year.
Craig Amundson.
I agree also with our police department here is great. You can just tell by that, by looking at the paper for what happens on the other side of the river compared to what happens here. There's very little crime, there's very little issues that are on this side of the river. I think it's one of those places, you can drive from one end to the other in about 10 minutes and get anywhere you want to go.
Thank you. Diane Norland.
Yes, yes, and yes. The, yeah, police, fire, all, all of the, the community feels safe and friendly, and yes, like you can walk. I do. In fact, I walk all over it.
Next to the mayor's candidates. What do you feel, in 30 seconds, is darn nice in our area? First will be Kenny DeWitt, then Ben Kous, Scott, or excuse me, Warren Anderson, then Scott Carlson.
Well, I'm going to start out with "DNA" is, was a nice slogan. I don't know who came up with it, but we live in a clean and a safe community, and I enjoy having that part of our asset. I also like the fact that I've lived in the same neighborhood. We have neighbors watching neighbors. We all look out for each other. The neighbors are gone now, we're taking care of their cats. So it's, it's just one of those situations.
Ben Kous.
Yeah, the DNA is great, being born and raised here too. It's just we have, a lot of people have common values, the safety that we have and the support that we get in the community with the police department, fire department, and getting involved and exposure to our kids, that type of stuff go a long way. Yeah, just the parks, everything, facilities, it's just, it is a really darn nice area to live.
Warren Anderson.
Well, I love our small-town values that we have in North Mankato. We have great police department, great fire department, our parks are great. I am on the record, I love, love our town, but I hate the slogan. So I, I, I have had a lot of people come up to me and say, what, what, what does that mean? And I'm going, yeah, well, I don't care for it either. But, you know, I think it should be retired, and we should come up with something else. But anyway, but we do have a lot of great things going in our town. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Scott Carlson.
Echo everybody else's comments. I grew up in Lower North Mankato. I would consider myself a sandlot boy. I spent hours at Spring Lake Park catching fish, playing hockey, swimming, bringing pounds of sand home in my shorts. You know, so my mom had to ring the big bell to get me home, but just everything, quality of life, parks, trails, bike-friendly tennis courts. It's like Mayberry to me, so I love it.
We're actually running out of time. I think we're trying to go an hour and a half. Yes, yep. So this will be our last question, and then we'll have closing remarks. We will start with the mayor candidates to respond. We will start with the mayor candidates to respond first. Please describe your leadership style and how it will serve you in your role if elected. Scott Carlson is first, then Warren Anderson, Kenny Dewitt, and then Ben Kous.
My leadership style is not, I guess I'm not a dictator. I believe in the team feel, we need to work together. I've modeled myself after a lot of books I've read, and I think I've enlisted a lot of mentors in my life. Anytime I do something new, I'm always looking for a mentor to kind of help me with that new adventure, whether it was coaching cross-country. Even 25 years later, I, I'm using mentors for cross-country, younger people, older people, learning new tricks of the trade. So, you know, my leadership style is that we work together. I consider myself like a leader of leaders, and, you know, I, I like to bridge gaps and get everybody on the same page. So, you know, I, I just believe that, you know, that's the way you're going to get things done. You're not going to get things done by being divisive, you know, or always trying to be like that squeaky wheel, so.
Thank you. Warren Anderson is next.
Okay, my leadership skill, I like to call it a management skill. I've run enough stores and been in management positions for a long time, almost 50 years, and you have to be able to compromise, but you have to get consensus on what you really need to get done. And I've always told all of my employees, I said, "I'll always listen to any of your concerns, your, your thoughts, anything." I said, "We may not do them for one reason or another," but I said, "We'll always hear out everything, and we'll, we'll, we'll work it out and try and figure out what the best answer is." And you, you need to do that because, again, this isn't a dictatorship. We don't, we can't run like Russia's being run. We need to work with everybody involved, and whether that's the, the average guy on the street, whether it's the city council, whether it's a North Mankato mayor versus Mankato mayor, you need to work out what works best for everybody. Somebody won't be happy, but as long as most people, you can work it out with them, that's the way it works out. Thank you.
Kenny Dewitt.
I come to you with different, different aspect of leadership skills. As an Eagle Scout, you were required to be a senior patrol leader or quartermaster of your scout troop. I was an Eagle Scout in 19, boy, '71, a few years ago. But then going on, I was also captain of the cross-country team at Loyola. I went on to a career in manufacturing, working for Continental Can, Crown Corps and Seal, serving on corrective action teams and was on the Activity Committee, planning Christmas parties, company picnics, and making sure everybody within the workforce was a happy camper. And continuing on, was a friend of Lowell Seberg's, former mayor in North Mankato, and he convinced me to run in 2004. Didn't win that election, but I did continue on, and in '06 was elected to the city council for four years. Showed some leadership qualities there. I did step on some toes, and I did get myself into a little trouble once in a while, but I still feel I have those leadership qualities, and I would like to continue to offer them to the citizens of North Mankato.
Thank you. Ben Kous.
I think throughout my life, I've been able to get a great, great appreciation from athletics now through my professional career and the importance of teamwork and bringing everybody together to go towards that common goal. So that type of culture would be something I would work towards. It'd be, leadership-wise, it's definitely have a collaborative type of leader, making sure everybody in the room has, feels comfortable with a voice that way, and that we're working towards that common goal. We're all different individuals, and we respect that in the same time. If we're all pulling in the same direction, it'll make it very easy to have good conversations, and that we make a good consensus decision as a group. Being open to asking questions and getting understanding is definitely a good way to lead, and good leaders are making sure that everybody else that's on their team is contributing and doing what they need to do to bring the value to, to, to the team.
All right, so now these council candidates, first it would be Diane Norland, then Craig Ammonson, Sandra Oakes, and Matt Peterson. Please describe your leadership style and how it will serve you in your role if elected.
My leadership style is one of cooperation and collaboration. There's a job to be done, okay, let's sit and talk, let's sit down and talk about how do we do this, who does what, and respect the differences in, in opinion and figure out compromises so we can get the work done.
Craig Ammonson.
I think this is probably going to be the shortest answer out of all of us. It's going to be short and sweet. It's, do you talk to the people, you find the common ground, and you make it happen.
Sandra Oakes.
Thank you. Like most of us up here, are collaborators, so I definitely am a collaborator, but I'm also a learner. I like to make sure I follow up with everything, and I'm also like a strengths-based leader. I have many weaknesses, but I also have a lot of strengths, so I find the best person that can help me with my weaknesses, so I will delegate my weakness to a person that's got that strength. But I think the most important part is actually asking questions and learning from each other, and then trying to find a common ground where we're meeting in the middle and hopefully having a, an agreement at the end where we're all satisfied with it. So I would say I'm a collaborator, but I'm also a, one that knows where I need some help, and I will make sure that those people that have that strength that I don't have will take over certain situations.
Matt Peterson.
My style would be listen first, build consensus, and then work together to get the, the common goal done. When you need, building consensus, you're not going to make everybody happy, but that's part of it. When a decision has to be made, if it has to be made, I feel comfortable making it, whether it's popular or not popular. I look at what we're gonna, what we're doing here, what we're trying to become, and by us trying to stay on the council or get to the council, or I'm very excited that no matter what happens, there's, there's a mayor sitting there, you know, that hasn't been here before. That's a great, great thing for the city to have some change and some new insight. So I look at this thing that we're all running here for as a stool, and the stool has three legs, and, you know, the, the city and the government is a leg, the businesses and the citizens are a leg, so there's three legs. And if you take one of those legs out and, and, and something happens to it, that stool's going to fall over. My personal approach to leadership over the past few years has been our council, our mayor, and our administrator took the citizens' part of the leg away, and the stool was faltering. It may not have fallen completely over, but the citizens, my feel for the last four to six years, got tossed aside, and when they finally had enough courage to come up and wanted to talk about something, you know, they kind of got shooed aside, which is not a collaborative effort at all. So listen first, build consensus, work together to get the common goal and the, and the project done.
Thank you. We will now proceed with your closing remarks. You each have a minute, and we'll start with the council candidates in the following order. First, Sandra Oakes, Matt Peterson, Craig Ammonson, then Diane Norland.
Thank you. I am really, I'm really looking forward to hopefully being re-elected this fall. I feel the last four years, I kind of got gypped out of a year because COVID happened, and we all kind of got stuck in our homes, and a lot of work still got done, but it didn't get done like it should have, I believe, in my opinion. I was also very sick towards the, towards the end. I received a new transplant in November, so I have a new kidney, and feeling great gives you a whole different lease on life, and you're passionate. I'm more passionate about this community and about making change moving forward than I ever have been. I was passionate before, but now I got the energy, you guys, so look out. But I really, I really want to help make a change, and, and there's going to be, as many said, some tough decisions, and I'm willing to make those decisions. So thank you, and I look forward to hopefully serving you another four years.
All right, Matt Peterson is next.
Sorry. Sorry.
First off, I'd like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on tonight, giving us all an opportunity to speak. For my closing remarks, I'm very excited for the opportunity to try to win a seat. I've been unsuccessful in the past, but I haven't wavered from why I want to be here. I want to help the community. I want to leave this a better place for my kids than it was when I moved here 20-some years ago. I have the, the time, and, and I'm afforded the luxury of being able to, to do that earlier on in life versus later on in life. So I think it's important that someone from my generation is on the council and looking forward to the next 30, 40 years for their children, too. So I appreciate your vote November 8th. Thank you for, thank you for putting this on.
Now Craig Ammonson.
I wish to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to say my point of view on the lifelong resident, trying to make a difference, and try to make this a safe and great place to live, like the motto says, which some people agree with and knowing it's a nice place to live. Thank you.
Diane.
Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on so that we can get our ideas and thoughts out to the public. Not that they don't know already, but it doesn't hurt to do it again. I bring many years of experience, and don't anybody sass about how many years of experience it is. Yes, it's a lot of years of experience to this position. I also bring a willingness to hear new ideas, to, to say, you know, we don't know what's out there. What new thing is coming down the road, and let's be ready for it. Let us not, so it won't flatten us or take us by surprise, but that we can use it to move forward better.
All right, we, the mayors will go in this order. Kenny Dewitt, Ben Kous, Warren Anderson, and Scott Carlson.
To the fine ladies at the League of Women Voters from St. Peter, thank you for inviting us to this forum. Well, this is kind of a reprieve. 18 years ago, I was in the same situation, running against Gary Zomer, and then the inevitable happened. It'll never happen to me. Well, a gentleman turned his Chevy Impala in front of my daughter and I on our Harley-Davidson. My daughter cart-wheeled down the road 95 feet, I flew through the air 60 feet. I was hospitalized for 101 days and another 58 days at the Courage Center in Golden Valley. Here's my opportunity to run for mayor again, and here I am. I'm on a platform of common sense, and that I think would help a long way at City Hall.
Ben Kous.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for organizing this. Been a great experience. For me, I'm just, would be excited to help play a role in this great community, to continue to improve North Mankato in many ways, and collaborate with the council and the community members and how we go about to do that. It's very, be a very exciting experience. We've got a lot of good things to continue to build upon and a great community to be proud of now, and it'd be exciting to work with some of you moving forward, if given the opportunity.
Warren Anderson.
Okay, I want to thank you guys for having, having us here today, but I want to get right to it. The things that, the first thing that I, I'm concerned about is the budgeting. When I bought, over 40 years ago, when I bought my first house, interest rates for my loan was 15%. My second house was 12%. And if, if it keeps going that way, budgeting is going to be very important. The other thing that I bring up all the time is that the council, the mayor, and the city manager need to work together to solve all these problems. We have a great town with great people in it, and I'm running so that we can keep it that way. Thank you.
All right, Scott Carlson.
And I want to echo everybody else and thank the League of Women Voters again for having us and hosting this event. I want to thank my wife for allowing me to make another adventure possible, along with coaching and teaching, and my daughters, Briggs and Breck. I do want to improve, like I said, stand to improve and build a better relationship with Mankato. I am an out-of-the-box thinker, and mine doesn't stop, if you ask all my friends. It's working 100% of the time, and I'm always observing my surroundings, what can be better. Let's see, I, I want to support, I do again, to support reentry in the partnership with ASA. Again, I'm a very hard worker. I probably work in the winter time 70 to 80 hours a week with all my jobs, hoping to cut that back if the voters choose to elect. And I do believe in mentorships, and so I'm, I'm hoping to, you know, learn more through mentors and people that have had, had the experience in the past.
Thank you. So thank you for all the thank-yous, and now let me thank all of you for joining us tonight. If we had an audience, they would be welcome to applaud your performance here tonight. Yes, and as, because I am a guest and not a member of the St. Peter League, I can unabashedly brag about their efforts, and I can share, we do the same thing in New Ulm. This is a lot of work that goes into putting these together, and they always do a great job over here. This isn't my first time working with St. Peter. So good job, everyone. Thank you to KTV, who has recorded the event. To our viewers, thank you for watching. If you need more information about this race or any others, you can get information about candidates, about voting, about dates, the, the open period, for example, for voting from home or absentee voting in Minnesota, at the following website, www.vot411.org. And the candidates here have the opportunity, if they like, to put information about themselves on that website for the rest of you to learn more about them, which brings me to another point. If you had a question for these candidates that we did not address tonight, please contact them directly and get your questions answered before you decide for whom to vote. Thank you and good night.